Good evening. At this time, would you please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded? The clock behind me is not correct. I'm going with the clock in front of me. In fact, I don't think this one's moved. Oh, it has a little bit. It's running slow, though. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. So at this time, I will call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Grand Terrace for March 12th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Lion President Becky Giroux. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh God, the eternal Father, we're thankful that we can gather together a group of thy servants here in this place. We ask, Father, that we might have thy blessing upon this proceeding, that we might be able to count on a small portion of thy intelligence and wisdom to guide us through the business of the city, that those who have ears to hear might hear, and those that eyes to see might see, those who wish to speak their peace might be heard, and that all might do things in accordance with thy will, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Thank you, Lion President. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magnaville.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are acted upon by one, at one time, by the City Council without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent.
Mayor, I move we pass consent calendar for, without discussion and...
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magnaville voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff and may be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Thank you. We'll begin with Becky Giroux.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Councilmembers Hussey, Robles, and Allen, city staff, and residents of Grand Terrace. My name is Becky Giroux. I'm a longtime resident of City of Grand Terrace, and I'm also the current president of the Grand Terrace Lions Club. Behind me are some lions that some of have served up to 45 years. These are men and women who believe in the lion's motto, "We serve." I'm here to share the good news about the Grand Terrace Lions Club, which started 45 years ago. We're a 501(c)(4) nonprofit charity that serves the community and many charities such as Friends in Sight, Guide Dogs of the Desert, the Amputee Connection of Redlands, the Loma Linda Eye Foundation, and other community youth organizations. We're a bigger part of the International Lions Club, which has over 50,000 clubs with 1.9 million members who volunteer their time in 170 countries. That's pretty phenomenal, pretty big, and the need is out there. Grand Terrace Lions have provided scholarships for our Grand Terrace High School seniors. We've helped raise money for the Grand Terrace Legacy Marching Band, the track and field team, the swim team, and the football team, providing funding for uniforms for their travel to other events that they might not otherwise be able to attend. We also mentor the high school Leo Club to be good leaders and hopefully to serve as lions, to serve the community one day. We do this through events like Pancake Breakfast, golf tournaments, bunkos, and many other events to raise money. We also serve the community in other ways, so I just wanted to provide an example. We held a Friends in Sight clinic last year. There was over 400 people standing in line to get free glasses, full families. I was in charge of handing out the glasses. Once they had gone through the ophthalmologist, they got their prescriptions. I was the last call, and so they would come to me to be fitted with their glasses. This one woman in particular, I could tell that she was a homeless woman, just, you know, by her dress and her hair and that type of thing, and she was very timid walking up to me. So I just said, "Come on, you know, let's look at your new glasses." So she needed two pairs. She needed one to see distance, and she needed one to be able to read. And so I handed her her first pair, which were her distance, and I said, "Put these on, turn around, and tell me what you see." So she put her glasses on, she turned around, and I waited, and I waited, and finally I said, "Is everything okay?" She turned around and she was crying, and I said, "Are you okay?" And she said, "I haven't been able to see for so long." So next, you know, here I'm all choked up, right? So then we put her readers on. I hand her a piece of paper, you know, to read, to make sure that they were good for her, and the same thing happened. She got all choked up, she's crying, you know, I'm crying right along with her. She said, "I haven't been able to read in so long." So for me, walking away from that event that day, I was so humbled, and I said, "This is why, this is why I do what I do." We also had one this year. I got there about 10:00 in the morning, pouring down rain, and here's hundreds of people waiting in line to get free glasses. There was a lot of children. We were able to serve almost 400 people that day in the pouring rain. We were able to refer out 32 for additional services. So what a blessing that was for all of us. So, community friends, those of you who are watching on Channel 3, we need your help and we need your support. The Grand Terrace Lions, there's so much we can do, but there's, you know, only a certain amount of us to be able to do the work. So I'm reaching out, I'm inviting you to join us at our lion's den. You can come and observe a board meeting the third Wednesday of the month. You can also join us for our breakfast meetings, which are the first and third Wednesdays of the month, and it's over at the Grand Terrace Senior Center. So we welcome you. If you want to volunteer your time, it not only helps those in need, but it also gives you a sense of pride and accomplishment, like it does for me, and that comes from deep within. So when you're ready to come and check us out, you can go onto the website, www.granterrisliens.com. You can contact a board member, and we'll take it from there. We'll show you the ropes. So mark your calendars, we have a really wonderful special event. And Lieutenant Wolf, we're having, we're partnering with the Amputee Connection of Redlands, and we're going to be hosting a Pancake Breakfast in honor of Lionville Nestle. So most of the proceeds will be donated to the Amputee Connection. So everyone come out. Tickets are $6 upfront or $7 at the door. It will be hosted right next to the Bank of America where we had it last year. So you can purchase your tickets in advance by contacting any board member of the Grand Terrace Lions Club. So also, don't forget to drop off your glasses. The stories that I've shared today, they're real, and we definitely need a lot of glasses to be able to share them with those that are in need. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Giroux. Our next speaker is Jeremy Briggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'm coming to you as the community liaison for the Grand Terrace Community Basketball in Little League. Just wanted to put out there that we're having our ceremonies this weekend for both divisions. On Saturday, 8:00 will be the Little League grand opening. Just want to put that invitation out there again, like we had for basketball a couple months ago, have a, see if you guys wanted to make time, come out. For basketball, would love for you guys to come out. That'll be on the 17th on Sunday at 9:00 a.m. Would like a little redo as far as the microphone. If you guys can come out, I know we had a little problem, but I swear I'll be there two hours ahead of a time checking the mic. So if you guys can make time, it'd be great. If not, I understand, but that's what we got going on. We want to welcome everyone to come out and support these kids. We got a great, I haven't been able to put too much time with Little League right now. I've been more focused on basketball, finishing that up, but I know Little League's been doing great things. They got a new board this year. Big things to come for this year. I'm looking very forward to being involved with that as soon as basketball finishes up. But Sunday's going to be All-Star Weekend. We come out, we try to mirror the NBA All-Stars as much as we can, three-point competition, skills tests, best passing. We have All-Star games all day long, the best of the best play all day long after that, and then at the end of the day, it ends with a coaches game where coaches will play versus coaches. So we're all looking forward to playing against each other. It's, you know, the battle between the coaches and the game, we get to take it to the court. So it's going to be a good game, and I wanted to invite everyone through the community to come out. It's a free event, you know, come help with the vendors, come get the snack bar. That's where we get our donations from. So we just want to come out and give a good show. We have our own in-town All-Star Weekend, and we'd love for everyone to come out and be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Next speaker is Bobby Forbes, and I did see her, but I don't see, oh, there she is.
Are we good?
Yes.
So I think everyone's trying to get used to the time change, but the butterflies that threw, went through the inland empire today, I think energized everyone. I saw people walking around in the fields taking pictures of the butterflies flying and pointing to their children. I just think it was a really cool thing, and I think all of us felt good because of it. So on a happy note, that's my, what I have to say for the moment. I would like to request from Mr. French Department to please paint, repaint Mount Vernon Canal and Grand Terrace Road. You cannot really read the stop on the street. Everything's really faded, and pretty soon people are going to start using that as the excuse as to why they're running it, the stop signs. It's been really dangerous there lately, and I would like to thank the Sheriff's Department for doing so much traffic control this week. I have seen them at many corners, so that means they're not busy doing other things, and they're taking care of some of the people running stop signs. So if you got a ticket, oh, well, you should stop at the stop signs. Thank you very much for doing that. And then I apologize for not having the name of the young man that died this weekend, but a Grand Terrace resident died this weekend saving the lives of others, and I believe it was in Highland. And maybe someone here knows his name. I wasn't able to pull it off of Facebook while I was waiting, but it shows such compassion that this man knew there were children and people in this trailer that was on fire, and he went in and gave his own life to save these four people. And I just would like to give my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Mr. French, you have plans for that intersection that Ms. Forbes mentioned, correct?
Excuse me. She mentioned a few streets.
Mount Vernon Canal, Grand Terrace Road. It's one little intersection there at the end of Mount Vernon before you go down the hill.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's part of our HSIP Cycle 8 project that we're just trying to get bid right now.
Okay. So when do you think that that will be addressed?
We're hoping in 30 days we'll be able to go to bid, and then within another 30 days, start construction at that time, so 60 days from now.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then that was the last request to speak that I had, so we will bring it back to council members for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Magnaville. Since the last meeting, I attended the community cabinet meeting for the Colton Joint Unified School District. It was the first one they've had this year, and I was, it's the first time I've attended one, and I was really impressed with the entire two-hour event. Mr. Magnaville was there to host it, but there were groups of students there from so many of the different schools in the school district. They were either performing or showcasing their talents in one way or another. There were quite a few video presentations from classes of kids who were really into making short documentary movies or that sort of thing, and then there were some live performances. Even our own Grand Terrace High School sent their drama team or their drama class over there, and we all learned why Sam doesn't eat green eggs and ham from them. So it was, but it was a great event that morning, and I'm really glad that I'm a part of that. I only wish it could be more often, you know, than every three months or so, because there's so many kids with so many talents that could be showcased there. And then I attended the Blue Mountain Hike, of course, and what I'd really like to say about the Blue Mountain Hike and Blue Mountain itself is I want to say thank you to those who put that all together. What a great event that really was. Thanks to the city staff. I want to thank, of course, Dennis Kidd and the Friends of Blue Mountain, Dr. Sigstadt, Sheriff's Department with their search and rescue crew up there, and the Girl Scouts. I wouldn't ever want to leave them out. They had the finest welcoming committee ever right at the top of that mountain. And so all the people that made that possible, I really applaud them. But I want to say a special thank you. I wish you was here tonight. I want to say a special thank you to Dennis Kidd and the Friends of Blue Mountains, because several years ago, Dennis passed out mud balls filled with wildflower seeds and compost at the start of one of Blue Mountain hikes, because he had a desire to try to restore the blue lupines on the mountain after the fire that burned them all off some years back. And then the drought came, and they struggled along, and nobody thought it was effective. But boy, if you look at them now, how thankful I am that Dennis was so, and the Friends of Blue Mountain were so thoughtful to go to that trouble and that expense and to use the hike as a way to reseed the mountain with those beautiful wildflowers that, you know, that make it, give it its namesake. So thank you to all of those who made that possible, and thanks to the Lions for what they do. Thank you, Becky, for everything you brought attention to. And the only thing I have left is a question, actually. Either perhaps, Mayor, you can answer it, or I could ask Mr. Briggs, because I wanted to go to those events, but he was talking so fast for his three minutes, I didn't get him written down. So I'd like the date and time again.
Maybe Mr. Briggs will send those to us.
Yeah.
But I know this Saturday at 8:00 is the opening ceremonies for the baseball.
At the, at the high school?
I believe it's at the park.
Oh, at the park, okay.
Veterans Freedom Park.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Couple things. I did also do the Blue Mountain Hike and thank all the volunteers who made it possible. It was a great day and really peaceful, and like I said, the wildflowers are beautiful up there. I made it three times up and down. Tried to make it four, but we ran out of time. I was wore out after that, so the next day I didn't do anything, but it was a really nice day, and the weather was beautiful, and just when you get to the top of the mountain, you know, and you look out, just how green it is. I wish our hills stayed green like that all year. Unfortunately, they don't. I went to a League of Cities meeting this last weekend, and we talked about labor marketing. So I have a market report, but I'm still working on it, because it's really interesting. It talks about the labor marketing thing, the inland empire, so it's really fascinating. Of course, the book's kind of big, so I want to break it down in layman's terms and bring it back to us. And one thing they did talk about is the Ontario Airport, and they're talking about the shortage of pilots, that a lot of the pilots used to come from the military, and they're not getting that many anymore. So if you ever want to do a career path, they need pilots up there, so that's a good thing to look into. And one other thing was the Cat in the Hat. I saw the mayor at the Grand Terrace Elementary. I went there, and I also went to Myers Elementary in Rialto. I was invited over there to read. I think the kids set me up, because I don't know if anybody ever read Fox and Socks? Well, they wanted me to read that, and it says, "A tongue twister for super children." I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, you know, this can't be that hard." And then I never thought about this, it says, "Take it slowly, this book is dangerous. This thing is really dangerous." I think this, if you read this, you become a lawyer, because there's all kinds of words in here. Is that right? Did you read this to become a lawyer, pass the bar exam? But I really appreciate, and the kids were really great, and you had a good time. That's a great event to have every year, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Thank you. My voice is not here, so although I enjoy green hills, I don't think I could survive them. My allergies and colds. I have a friend who's in college and needing to get some hours in government, so I had him attend the Board of Directors meeting of the San Bernardino County Transportation Agency on March 6. And I won't go in tiny deals, but as far as the learning experience, it was quite interesting for him, because we had issues of whether the Brown Act was followed or not followed. There was discussions on right-of-way for expansion of the freeway around Ontario, and also on financing mechanisms with the federal government and SB1 funds, excuse me, Measure I funds. And so it was quite, big numbers being thrown around, so it was quite interesting for, I think, a college student to be exposed to all those discussions at that time, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I hope you feel better, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. First, I'd like to thank those who are attending and all those who are attending via the television. You know, I'd like, first, I'd like to say that I really admire all of you that made that trip up the mountain. And if I lose about another 100 pounds or so, I just might join you next year. The other thing is, here a few years ago, it was noteworthy that a few of the members of this council took it upon themselves to visit some folks who were, you know, that are citizens of Grand Terrace, who were in a tough way, you know, very challenged in relation to their medical condition. And I just want to encourage all of the citizens to take the opportunity to visit the folks that you know that are in similar circumstances. We have a friend who has recently been diagnosed with a very progressive brain tumor, and I've known her and her husband, her husband passed away about a year, about a year ago, but I've known her now for a long time, and it's tough to see the degradation in relation to their physical capacity, but at the same time, it's tougher to think that you're going through these things by yourself. So I would encourage all of us to take a couple of minutes out and visit those folks who are, could gladly use the visit. And that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. On March 1st, Grand Terrace Elementary had their, what do they call it? It's a spring festival, although it seemed like it was winter. And the interesting thing about that particular festival is with the Interstate 215 Barton Road Interchange project being 50% complete, SBCTA was, created a project and a challenge for the kids at the elementary school, since they are very much impacted by the interchange, and they are very close to what is going to be the city's first roundabout, they took it upon themselves to work with the principal and some of the teachers there, and they have been teaching the students about the bridges and building the bridges, and teaching the children about roundabouts, and they had a poster contest, asking for students to draw pictures of the roundabout, and the pictures they wanted them to draw were those that would show people how to navigate a roundabout. And then they also had a bridge-building contest out of popsicle sticks. So I was, I was one of those that they chose to judge the posters and the bridges, and each of the bridges had to stand up to five pounds, but just about all of them, except for a few, withstood 20 pounds of weight, some only 10, and then the winner withstood 21 pounds of weight that they put on it. What they did with the posters is they took the winning posters, and they are going to be using those for their, for their announcement. So I believe city manager will have that in his report. But, but they were some really good posters, but SBCTA has already sent out one of their announcements with one of these posters from our Grand Terrace Elementary School students, and so that's just a wonderful thing for the students and for their learning experience, and the fact that they got the exposure to the engineers who came out to talk to them about all of the building that was going on. So on March 6th, I attended the Omni-Trans board meeting, and the two items that were main drivers for the meeting at that time were the financial audits they received and the fact that they are developing maps for the Omni-Trans service areas, so that the board, when it meets for its scheduled workshop on the 14th, will have an opportunity to understand the routes in each of the territories that's covered by Omni-Trans. On the 6th, I also attended the Board of Directors meeting that Mayor Pro Tem, or excuse me, Councilmember Robles and her, and her college student attended, and it was, it was quite an interesting meeting. One of, a number of the things that we did, we conducted hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for property interests in the Interstate 10 corridor for the Contract 1. And this is the express lanes that they will be building. They are starting at the county line with LA County, and they are moving west. So the first phase of it is the cities of Montclair, Upland, and Ontario. We approved an increase to allowances and contingencies for a contract with Flatiron West for an Interstate 15 baseline interchange project. We adopted the Metropolitan Planning Organization portion of the state active transportation program, Cycle 4 Project awards. There were a lot of cities that received some Cycle 4 Project awards, much like we've applied for in the past. We received an update on the introduction of a new MetroLink Friday late-night round trip on the San Bernardino line, which is doing very well, from what I understand. We approved the revised Interstate 10 corridor contract plan finance, and we approved an updated draft term sheet for the Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. And that was what Councilmember Robles, actually, one of the things that she referred to with a federal funding, they call it a TIFI loan, and a number of, probably 18 months back or more, SBCTA board started talking about this process for applying for a loan through the federal government's loan process for the express lanes. And the idea behind it is it gave us two advantages, and one of them was it would save about $75 million in interest, and their terms were a whole lot easier to manage. They didn't ask for payments until we were a certain amount into the actual project, where the project is actually collecting toll and having something to pay back the loan. And so after many months of wondering whether we were going to wrap up this, this loan process, the loan documents for us to review came in later than the Board of Directors package usually ends up going out to the Board of Directors. And so we had a package for this loan that was about this thick, which was about the same size as our board package, and that was part of the controversy, is did the board members receive it in time? And so that, it was, it was quite an interesting discussion before we actually had the real discussion of the, the item that was on the agenda, or that was added to the agenda. And then finally, we reviewed the information on a SCAG Regional Council District and provided direction to support the current regional council district composition for our subregion. On the, on the Blue Mountain Hike, I want to echo my colleague's sentiments and the thank you to those that helped make it happen, and I believe Councilmember Adams, you also wanted to thank the Boy Scouts and SERP for their participation, because they always come.
Oh, absolutely.
They, they come out and do a great job, and that is where I will end tonight, except that I do want to express my condolences to the family of the fine young man that thought of his life last when he entered the Mobile Home Park in Highland. thought of his life last when he entered the Mobile Home Park in Highland to save the lives of those inside. So we will move on to our agenda. We have no public hearings. We have no, we'll move on to unfinished business, which we have none. So that leads us to new business. We begin with Item 9 on the agenda, which is initiation of proceedings to annex land within tract 18604 as an area of Van Buren Street, Tesoro Court, Engage Canal, to landscape, landscape and lighting assessment District 89-1. Mr., Mr. Public Works Director Alan French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. I'm here to present this item for you, which is the annexation of the final map area into the lighting and landscape district. This item supports the 2030 goal, number one, to ensure fiscal viability through recovering costs for services. The city formed the lighting and landscape maintenance district in 1989. It has annexed four properties at this time after development. This tentative map was conditionally approved in September of 2016. The map was accepted back in April of 2018, which is off, across from Marado and Van Buren, just west of Mount Vernon and Van Buren. The map can be annexed into the lighting and landscape assessment district to cover the costs for lights, street trees, landscaping, and other amenities needed for the track. The annexation process is dictated by Proposition 218 and is outlined in the staff report. The engineer's report that has been provided estimates the cost for the maintenance and provides an initial assessment for the properties to cover those costs. That is also attached to the staff report. The owner has consented to the inclusion of the project within the city's assessment district. Staff is recommending at this time to adopt the resolutions to initiate proceedings for annexation of the track into the 89-1 lighting and landscape assessment district. Also, staff is recommending to preliminarily approve the engineer's report, and finally adopt a resolution declaring the intention to annex the track into the lighting and landscape district and set a public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you, Director French. What other locations are part of this lighting and landscaping district?
Let's see, the ones that were previously annexed, Madam Mayor, include Track 18071, which is off of Pico, north of Oriole.
Okay.
Another one is Track, let's see here. The tracks included off of Canal and, Canal...
Okay, if you don't have them in front of you, that's fine. Are there any other questions of staff at this time?
Madam Mayor, if you like, I can assist on that.
Director Molina, please.
So the tract at the end of Pico, which is the one we refer to as the Carger map that Crestwood Communities is building out. And then there was one by Aegis Builders off of Pico Street and roughly Canal, the Gage Canal. And then we also have existing ones that are on the north side of Barton Road along Canal. There's two, two different ones there in that location. And then there's the one that's off of Oriole, as indicated by Director French.
Okay.
So we have just a few.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? All right. Any requests to speak on this item? No, Madam Mayor. All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the three resolutions and the recommendation. Do they need to be read?
No.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Matt Novo voting yes.
Thank you. Item number 10, assessing additional city services in Grand Terrace through community survey. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. Oops. That's not good.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. If we can give our PowerPoint a few seconds. City Manager. The staff report is assessing City of Grand Terrace Public Services through community survey. This staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of expenditure budgets, allocations, and operational costs. To provide a little history on community survey, back in May of 2013, the city hired a consultant to obtain feedback from the city's voters regarding a potential tax measure. This resulted in the utility, UUT, and the cost of the service at the time was about $20,000. Now, in 2017, the city manager held several polling sessions here in the council chambers, where they voted live when several questions were asked regarding public safety services. Now, in August of last year, City Council again requested staff to research the cost of polling residents for enhanced public services. So what we did was contact that consultant who helped us in 2013. We provided City Council with that information in October, and the cost they provided was about $24,000. City Council at the time declined to move forward, and what they did was request staff to find a, a more, more, more cost-effective way of handling community survey programs. So we did our research, and we looked at online surveying. So this is a simple, where questionnaires, questions are going to be formed, and it is going to be sent via email, via text, or it could be a landline, where you do automated response, depending on your response to questions will be asked, or they can do a Facebook chatbot survey. I had to call and actually ask what this is about. So if you are on Facebook or on a Facebook page, you'll see this little message that comes in the corner saying, "Hi, would you like to take a survey?" So if you click yes, it'll take you to a link, and then you can actually answer our survey. And I don't know, if, if this is something we would like to do, then maybe we could when someone is visiting the city's Facebook So the other benefits of an online survey, you'll get real-time reporting, meaning as our residents do their answers, the city staff will have the ability to actually get those results and provide a report to council as often as council would like. And it does, it's regular collection. So if we sent out the survey today, after two weeks, we can provide you the results of however many answered. Two weeks later, yeah, we can, this is cumulative, depending on how long you'd like the survey to run, or depending on how many results or how many, how many people we would like taking the survey. Meaning if you'd like us to stop the survey after 2,000 have answered it, and that might be over a three- or four-month period, it might be over a six-month period. That is council's choice. Now, as far as to the types of questions, I did put a list in the staff report, so we can ask as many as council would like, and then I will explain that. But, you know, these are sample topics: customer satisfaction, parks, public safety, infrastructure, the budget, and the allocation of city resources, events, and community involvement. So this report, again, was asking City Council to provide staff with topics or questions that they would like to see in the community survey. So that would be our first step, after which we would consolidate those, send back all the questions for review and approval by council. Upon approval, we would coordinate with the consultant to create these questions and all the applications, and then we would monitor results and report back to the city. I did speak to one of the consultant, the estimated cost, and I put there is $5,000 for 10 questions. So if you want this to be a three-question survey, maybe today, or only a five-question survey, I, that, that is something that the consultant is amenable to negotiate. But what we also did, provided an attachment as a result of the polling services that we provided, and just a small sample questionnaire that we have. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Questions of staff? Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Ms. Fortune, for your staff report. What is it that we would get for $24,000 from True North that we would not get with the $5,000 one from Taluna or Vox Luca?
Councilmember Allen, the, the $5,000 strictly online, so there's no communication with our residents. You know, they'll send you an email, whether you choose to respond or not, as your resident, that is up to you. But when we head through north, they're calling, they're following up, yeah, they're, they were holding focus groups, yeah, like neighborhood meetings, yeah. That is what they bring to being the, that consultant. And they're there to guide this. If there is a certain direction, or there's a particular topic that you are looking for, then they will work towards that. Yeah, they help us question, they help us formulate the questions to get the answers that we are looking for. And, and they will, again, provide a profile of all the Grand Terrace voters. When I provided the staff report, True North was actually kind enough to actually provide that data that they had provided then. And if you would like to look at it on the screen, we can bring it up.
No, that's all right. So, so the True North, what they provide, or let me rephrase it, the other-
The one in front of us tonight.
The, the other companies that offer these surveys, online surveys, they don't offer any kind of analysis, they don't work with the staff to find the goals and the direction the city wants to go, or anything like that?
No, they, they are an online survey-
Okay.
-company, yeah, that is what they do. They will put your survey out there.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we provide the questions, and they will provide the, they will facilitate that to make sure it gets out to the public. But the interpretation, that is up to us. True North, on the other hand, was more helpful of that, providing a goal, helping with the direction, doing live, live phone calling, creating focus groups for the community, yeah, that, that's not part of the-
And in the end, whenever they're all done, they also analyze and come back with, like a report saying-
Yes, they do. They analyze, they come back with a report, they actually make a recommendation, as they did the last time. When they did that report, they did a survey, they made a recommendation as to how much they thought we should ask-
Yeah.
-for the UUT, because with, how much they thought would pass on the vote.
Did we follow their recommendation?
Somewhat.
I mean, I wasn't a part, I don't know. You don't have to answer if you don't, if it's going to embarrass anybody. So-
Can I, can I ask for clarification along your lines here? True North surveyed voters?
Yes.
And they strictly kept it to registered voters, whereas I think this online survey does not make that distinction. Is that correct?
No. The, the online surveys will survey who we ask them to survey. Whether it's online or True North-
Okay.
-they all buy this database of registered voters.
Okay.
So they will have that.
So, but it's just registered voters, then? Is that what you're saying? It's not the, because there's only about 6,500 registered voters in Grand Terrace, but there's in excess of 13,000 residents.
That is correct.
So the rest of the residents deserve to have their voice heard, too, because they play in our parks and drive on our streets, you know, so-
True North would do the mass mailing.
I see.
When I talked to the online survey, the database that they had bought were of registered voters, but that's not to say that they can't access that. See, I was going off of, you know, what, what information I was providing.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, that's great. Well, that's all I have for now, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you. Well, that was one of my questions. Did we take the recommendations from True North in 2013, and we spent that money, and the recommendation didn't go through anyway?
Well, sir, without incriminating anybody, they, they did make a recommendation as a percentage. At the time, what was recommended to City Council was higher than what they recommended.
Okay. The thing is, on here, provide direction to staff to hire a consultant. I mean, my thing is, can't we do this in-house without hiring a consultant? I mean, it's just questions, and we have a committee make up the questions, and, you know, I'm trying to do this or ask for the lowest cost possible. I mean, because it seems like we're taking it back to the city, and the question is, you know, can't we do this in-house, on a committee, put it on our Facebook, put it on our survey? We have assistant to the assistant, or the executive assistant city manager, who's supposed to be computer savvy, and put that out there so we don't spend one dime? Because that's the whole idea, is trying to save money so we can use that money for something else.
So-
Mr. Duffy.
Yes, for the record, J. Duffy, City Manager. So, of course, we can put the form out there. We have ability to put the survey out there. But we would have to buy the data, just like this online consultant would do. And the difference between the online consultant and us and the previous version is that, the real question becomes, what do you want to do with the data? If you want us to go out and just survey everybody without having a scientific way to be able to articulate the data to you for you to use, certainly we can do that. The online survey will start you off with a set of data that they've purchased that has the parameters in the data. You, you get that, you'll get that information. But what the online survey won't give you is an analysis based upon, upon the data. They'll give you the results, and then you'll have to make that determination. And so as we were going through this, this process, that comes back to the question that I said earlier. What do you want to do with the data? For example, if we were talking about trying to get information on parks, is one of the questions, we would have some data, we could, we could ask the question, and we would have an idea of what you want with the parks. If you were trying to determine, say, public safety, if you ask the series of five to 10 questions, you'll get that data back, but it won't tell you, it won't give you, no one will give you the analysis that you're, that you're, that you're looking for. And that's the difference between an online survey and a professional consulting company, that, that's what they, that's what, that's what they do. And, and I understand our overall goal, the council's fiscal responsibility, overall goal, but the question is, if you're, if you're going to take the data from this $5,000 survey, and you believe that you can get the results you want, to go out to, to create an assessment of some type that's going to generate a million dollars over five years. So, you know, the thing is, you have to look at, you're going to get the survey, you'll get the survey, and someone will have to interpret what that is, based upon, for the $5,000. The, the difference with, Ms. Fortune was talking about with the, with the other consultant, they'll give you that an- give you that analysis, and that's the real big difference. Certainly, sir, we can put together the survey. We actually did that, and part of the data is here from the, we had five sessions here in the council. We then had the dinner with a cop, we had 200 people show up, 125,000 people show up. And so, we can get the data there, but we, it's not scientific as in terms of what you'll get at a minimum from this online survey. And then, the analysis is what would happen with the other survey of $24,000.
Well, Mr. Duffy, I mean, that's what I'm looking at, is, you know, we have a public oversight committee, and we have somebody coming, you know, and we get the residents' input, and, you know, as a council, we were voted in to make the decisions. And I don't think consultant thing is going to tell us, hey, it's this, and then we go by them, and then we don't, you know, it doesn't work. I mean, I'm trying to save money, I don't want to spend money and chase money to try to get something, and then the survey comes out.
Do you have further questions at this time?
But that's, you know, that's why I want to know, is, you know, are we going to be wasting money on this? Can we do it cheaper and still get the same bang?
If you want my professional opinion, cheaper isn't always better in terms of this particular situation. You're trying to come up with a set of data that's going to allow you to make an informed decision. I can give you raw data, I can give you information based on, based on the results that come in, but I don't have a way to, I'm not a professional analyzer in terms of with polling data and information. We can provide you that raw data, but it's just as good as the person who provided you with the data. That's what, so I'd be more than happy to do it again.
Would it be your recommendation to do it that way?
It would not be my recommendation to do it that way if, but only after I understood what you wanted to do with the data. If you, if you want to use the data to get general information, that's, it's a great, it's a great scenario. But if you're trying to put something out that's going to set a position, I think you need to have some additional analysis on that.
Further questions, Councilmember Hesse?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? We're doing questions, and then we'll do public input. Any questions at this time? Okay. Any requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Jeremy Briggs?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Jeremy Briggs, 22547, Manona Drive. I'm very excited to see this survey come to the board. My input on this survey is, I believe we need to hear from the people. I would love, I talk to people every day, all day, and I believe the questions need to come from them. I would like to see a separate committee get put together. As Councilman Hesse said, I would love to volunteer as a chairman to oversee this committee to make sure that the right questions get asked to the community. Every single generation, every age, the youth council that we talked about has an input on this. I mean, this, I believe this survey is going to have an impact on this city for the next 10 years to come. You guys are going to base decisions, we're all going to base decisions on what the community wants. So, to make an outside consultant come and make these questions and these decisions, someone that doesn't even live here in town, me personally, I would have an issue with that. And I could see a lot of people having an issue with an outsider making decisions on what we do here in town. This is our community, we should be able to take charge and decide what we're going to do for each other. I mean, I would want the best for you, I want the best for you, which I would hope you guys would want the best for me. A consultant is not going to see the best interest for the community, a consultant is going to see the best interest for themselves and their company. Yes, a consultant will be good for distribution of the survey once set and questionnaires are set in stone and the questions are set, yes, then use a outside consultant to get it out. But as far as using them to negotiate questions and what the topic should be, that should come from right here in town. And that's how I feel, and I just want to address that and make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Jeffrey McConnell?
Good body every evening. There is more computing power in this little thing right here than set the Apollo program man to the moon. There's got to be dozens of apps available out there. There are a dime a dozen that could do what Mr. Hesse was proposing to do. I think we should pursue this path that Mr. Hesse is suggesting, and, you know, it might be a little rocky at first, but once we figure out this path, we could use it in the future very inexpensively for many years to come. Now, what I've seen on this staff recommendations is very similar to all those surveying the parks that I've attended, me and about eight other people. And it's a good attempt, I appreciate that the staff appreciates the attempts to come out and to reach out to the people, but it doesn't work. And I would have thought free food would have brought people, but it just doesn't seem to work. So, I think if you put it on a piece of paper and put it out there with these generalized questions, you're still not going to get what you're really after. So, I think more specific questions, I mean, you can also add that to your survey, but I think more specific questions that would come from we, the people, like Mr. Hesse and Mr. Briggs are suggesting, and get this, give this ad hoc committee that this man has graciously volunteered to chair, an opportunity to really reach out to the people in their own way. And I don't, if you decide that, having served on the ad hoc committee, there's three people in here that went through those meetings, and I would prefer that staff not interfere like they did in that eight meetings we went to. That's still left a bad taste in my mouth, I think it should be totally independent. If you want to hear from we, the people, then you should hear from we, the people. And the goal of the thing, whether you put things on the ballot, that should be made clear, or if council should act on it, or both. But I think pursuing an inexpensive way in this digital world that we live in is the way to go. Even if it's a little rocky at first, once we get it down pat, we can use it repeatedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. All right, that's the last request to speak I have, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their comments and further discussion. Councilmember Robles.
I have to say, I'm disappointed with the staff report, it's not at all what I would expect. You know, the other thing I'm just going to say for my peers on the council, if you want my support on any future tax increase for police services without strong data, I will not be going down that path. I simply would be a no vote, I won't go. I do agree that there's possibly, with the kinds of data we have, some other approaches we can take, but I do know this, if we're going to be looking for some competent data, useful data, whether this community is going to support enhanced sheriff services with some kind of tax revenue increase, it has to be the registered voters, because they're the ones who are going to have to make or break a ballot measure that, and it, also, you know, I'd like to see, we have, what, five park and rec commissioners, five planning commissioners? You know, I think it would be good to get those two entities together and have a discussion about what community profile that we need, maybe engage three vendors with, that can make a presentation to that group and come back to us with some recommendation, but I'm not in favor of just going out and doing monkey wrench deals, you know. I'm not here to pinch a penny, I'm here to do a good job. And I'd rather do a good job and just completely walk away from something that's not going to be worthwhile at all. My final statement on this is, again, if the community out there, one portion of you expects this survey to come back on some kind of sheriff's benefit, tax revenue enhancement, there are two people to the right of me that will not support this at all. I supported it, I will not support anything without good data, I won't go down that path. And unless my peers are willing to spend some money for good data, I'm complete, I'm out. I'm not going to play the silly game. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Further comments? Councilmember Allen?
When True North Research was, performed their survey, how, do we know approximately how many respondents over the period of time, what the participation among the city residents was?
Councilmember Allen, I would have to get back to you on that, but I wanted to reiterate, I just wanted to make sure that council understood. The online survey company will use correct data, and the city manager asked me this, meaning if we wanted to survey registered voters at this age range, this ethnicity, and they will do that, that is what they will get it sent it out to. This is not, even this online survey, they're not just going to send it out blanket there, and they're also going to check to make sure that when you do complete the survey, that you truly are a registered voter. So, the data that they will provide will be good data based on whatever questions we ask, and whichever pool we want to survey.
So, it's, you know, it sounds to me that this survey is, you can, tell me, tell me I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like this survey is for one purpose and one purpose only, and that's to get, to figure out a way to hire another deputy.
Or it could be for funding for parks, or...
Well, it could be, but it doesn't...
It could be any of those things.
It could be, but it doesn't sound like that's what its initial purpose was put on, was requested for. Because we've had surveys, only a couple of years ago, we had a survey, and then three or four years before that, and I get the impression from residents, I mean, I get phone calls almost at least once a week at my house, wanting somebody wanting to do a survey, and I generally hang up on them, and I bet a lot of people do. And I think that people come forward when there's a concern that affects them, and if it's not affecting them, then, you know, they've got busy lives, they're, you know, they travel to LA to work every day, and it takes them two hours to get home, and when they get home, they don't, you know, they don't want to do surveys, and they just want to, anyway, I get the impression that the participation level, I went to a lot of those community meetings we had over the years, that we had at the senior center, we had at the here, and that thing, those, in this, in this attachment that you have right here, that seems to me to be pretty much, pretty telling, you know, 25 participants, 22 answered the question, 21, out of the whole city, you know?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes?
And then, after you answer that question, I have a question about one of your attachments as well.
Sure, the data that we have in the packet is, was based upon an invitation to people, to clubs and people to come to the council meeting. There was no parameters in terms of whether they're registered voters or not registered voters, so it was very general information, different from what you received from True North, which, the difference is, with True North versus what you have before you today, is that after you get the survey, they will then do the follow-up and do focus groups. And so, and so, part of the challenge that we have as staff is, our responsibility is to make sure that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision. And so, what I'm trying to let the council know is, you're going to get the data, and there'll be, there'll be no one there to interpret what that means, other than staff, which is a generalist in terms of the information. And so, if my obligation is to provide you with the best information, then you need to have someone who has experience in telling you, giving you an analysis of what this data is telling you.
Well, they also have to have experience in writing questions, and I understand the point that Mr. Briggs made about the types of questions, but there's a science to writing questions so that they are statistically significant. And so, an attachment, too, that starts on packet page 163, is this something that we designed from council, city staff?
Yes, that's...
Okay, so let me call your attention to packet page 165. Question nine, how much would you be willing to be assessed for additional public safety services a month? $2, $4, $6, or $8? There's no, there's no room in there for somebody that doesn't want to be assessed at all. And somebody that prepares surveys and knows how to do them, takes into account that there are going to be people that say, I want, I want extra safety services, I don't want to pay for them, or I'd be willing to pay more than the $8 a month. But somebody that knows about surveys knows how to make sure there's an answer for everyone taking the survey, so that you're not forcing to get the answer that you want to have.
And what staff did was that, Ms. Fortune was just giving the example of the question.
No, I understand, but...
You're absolutely right, Mary.
But that shows the example of why we don't just have staff come up with it, because that's not what they do for a living. And certainly, community can put out app surveys, and they should. There's no reason that the city has to say, hey, community members, go do surveys. If there are surveys that you want to do of the community, then that's something that community members can, can survey community members without any kind of a directive from the city at all. But when I look at this, I see the value in having somebody that, that does surveys for a living, that knows how to analyze. True North was actually a polling company, this is a survey, and there are two different things about that. But if we do decide that we want some sort of survey, then yeah, I want good information, and I want an analysis, and I want, I want it to be something that is solid with respect to whatever decision that we are getting information to make. And so, that's just my position. At this time, I don't, I don't know that we need to have a survey, and it goes back to Councilmember Allen, and you said that you believed that this was about extra security and policing services. And so, I imagine that is probably why this is in front of us today. Councilmember Allen?
As long as I've been in, hanging around City Hall in various roles, and been interested in the city governance and the way it's being led, there's been this desire on the part of the people up here at the dais to have surveys and all kinds, and they just want to, constantly seeking what the people out there and the residents are thinking or wanting or that sort of thing. And so, I agree that I'm not exactly sure that a survey is what is even needed right now, because we have this plan in place that we're going forward with, and I haven't seen any residents come forward with any complaints on that, or heard of any.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and so, one of the things that you would get with the previous survey that the city had, was you'll get the data, and the data will tell you whether, whether a measure of some type is going to be supported by the data. The data's going to tell you that the resident said, there's not a problem, or there is a problem, but they don't want to pay for it. And there'll be focus groups, and you'll have all, so you'll have good data to make a decision. So, staff, you know, here's the thing, I will certainly chase this again in six months, or three months, or five months, and whenever you tell me to do it, but it would be great to have a resolution to be able to provide you with the data so you can, you can make a decision on it.
What shall we do with this item?
I think this is, I think this item is not gaining any fruit at this point, so for, I think we might address this at a later time, but I don't think this is something we want to do.
I agree. Councilmember Hesse?
Come back with it later.
All right.
Yeah, I, I just don't think this is something in its current state that I want to pursue.
Councilmember Allen?
I concur with all the other statements, I concur with everyone else. We can bring it back later.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want a formal vote on this?
No, Madam Mayor, but if the council did wish, I would recommend doing a motion to receive and file.
All right.
Motion to receive and file for this item, provide direction, well, I won't read it, but...
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, item 11, apply an approved professional services agreement to, approved professional services agreement to apply for hazard mitigation grant program. Mr. Public Works Director, Alan French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. I'm Alan French, here to send this item to you for applying for a hazard mitigation grant program. This item serves, supports the 2030 goal number one for fiscal viability and number two for public safety. The hazard mitigation program had been set up due to disasters from the past year. It included wildfires, and now the hazard becomes the erosion of slopes and mudslide areas. In October, the city council had a revised, approved or revised list of projects to use some of the 15% bond proceeds. And the council chose to use the Mount Vernon slope stabilization project as one of the projects that would be available to use some of the bond proceeds for. And this project, the Mount Vernon slope stabilization, was also identified in the original 2011 bond offering. That month, back in October of 2018, after that meeting, the staff submitted a notice of interest for the federal program, hazard mitigation grant program, for the Mount Vernon slope stabilization project. In December, we received a response allowing us to proceed with applying for the grant, which is the next step of the project. The scope of this work would include data collection, review, preparation of technical materials, and preparing the sub-application, a FEMA questionnaire and a draft sub-application, as well as submitting that for review. Staff had sent an RFP out for the scope of work to Lynn Merrill &amp; Associates, Pacific Code Compliance, Evan Brooks &amp; Associates, and California Consulting. We received four proposals for the work and rated them. The grading was based on scope of work that was provided. The team that would be doing the work and the references of the four, EBA had scored the highest, as well as EBA has a proven record with the city, winning grants. From November 2016, we had won a H-SIP grant that I mentioned earlier, that we're about to go to construction on, for $435,000. And then last December, they also won an award for us for some guard rail throughout the city for about $650,000. So they have, they have a good track record with us. The proposed cost for this work, for the application, is $16,660. For funding, staff is recommending authorizing the direction to apply for this grant, as well as approve the professional service agreement between the city and Evan Brooks &amp; Associates to prepare the grant application and related documents. And to adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of the bond proceeds for up to $20,000 for the application process. Daniel Bartletson from Evan Brooks is here to answer any questions, as well as I am, should the council have any other items. Thank you.
Thank you, Director French. Questions of staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. French. My, my question is, is I see the, the definition of the grant, and is it your considered opinion, your professional opinion, that our project meets the definition pretty dovetail?
Yes, sir, councilman. I, I was a little leery at first as well, because it described wildfires and destruction of that. But as you, we read through it, it did indicate slope and soil stabilization, and which is what we were trying to do. So when we submitted our notice of interest, and it came back positive, we were thinking, okay.
So it's not like it's a footnote to it, it actually is a part of the overall program?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great. Okay, and then our chances? I mean, I know we're not all betting people here necessarily, but, you know, I hate to throw money away.
I agree fully. If the council wishes, I'd like to have their consultant come up.
That'd be great.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. We've had the privilege of working with the director, Director French, Director Molina, as well as the city manager in the past. We look forward to hopefully continuing that relationship. Relative to chances, grants certainly are a competitive process. And as the director mentioned, first and foremost, I think this program came out of the nature of the wildfires that took place across the state in the fall. But what it's dealing with now is certainly mitigation of those incidents. And as the director mentioned, you know, slope side stabilization is a key component to that, because once you have wiped out all the trees and the plants, you need to make sure that the slopes are stable. Well, you've got a really significant issue that's going on, on Mount Vernon, and not only would it affect your own roadway, but certainly the freeway, potentially rail lines below. I was telling the director, I think that you can make a really important case and a really strong story on why stabilizing that slope is such an important aspect. I think Cal OES and the federal government recognize that by inviting a full proposal. So I think, again, while it is a competitive process, and, and we have a lot of stories out there that certainly probably need help as well, I think the city is still very well positioned.
Terrific. What's your, what's your game plan in the general sense so far as, I, I know we've got some data that we can lean on, and I don't know that we have the soils back up to be able to prove our case to the nth extent. But it would seem to me that as it sits, we could kind of make a case for it to slide all the way down to the freeway, as you talked about.
I would definitely agree with you, and I think, you know, they always say that pictures are worth a thousand words. And something that we pride ourselves doing is making sure that those pictures do tell those words. We usually use drone footage, so we're going to be able to go up above the project site and be able to take relevant photos, not just of the, the slope, but certainly how that's going to affect what's down below, both Mount Vernon, as well as the freeway and the rail corridor, and just the impacts that any sort of slide, large or small, would potentially make on the community and the surrounding communities as well.
Last question then, is this a matching fund situation for us, or is it a, a complete grant?
Well, Alan.
The overall grants, the total estimated cost is $3.7 million. The grant's $3.2. The council, the bond proceeds are already set aside $600,000.
That's what I remember. Okay, thank you.
And so your name, are you Daniel Bartletson?
I am, correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions at this time? Council? Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, I didn't want to just add that, I, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood. It's because the council's actions of approving the hazard mitigation plan that you approved probably a year ago, that allows us to apply for these, for these funds. So it's a forethought the council had to be able to say, this is a significant issue. And so it's because we had that hazard, had the project identified in our hazard mitigation plan is the reason why OES said, yes, you can, you can submit for this project.
And, and the city manager is correct, without that plan in place, you would not have actually been likely invited. Instead, you would probably be applying for a grant to complete your plan.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Duffy, thank you, Mr. Bartletson. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Councilmember Allen.
Follow the recommendations in the agenda report. Authorize and direct staff to apply for the hazard mitigation grant program from California Office of Emergency Services for Mount Vernon slope stabilization. Approve a professional services agreement between the city and Evan Brooks Associates for the preparation of grant application and related documents for the hazard mitigation grant program in the amount not to exceed $16,660. Authorize the city manager to execute the EBA agreement subject to city attorney final approval and adopt a resolution approving expenditure of bond proceeds in the amount of $20,000, and authorize the appropriation thereof.
Big second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 12, which is approved professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and California Consulting LLC, Evan Brooks Associates, Albert A. Webb Associates, KTUA, and Blass &amp; Associates, respectively. We have Planning and Development Services Director Sandra Molina.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I have a brief presentation for the council. As indicated by the mayor, this is a request for the council to adopt professional services agreements for on-call grant writing services. This, this item is consistent with our 2030 vision with regard to goal number one, to ensure fiscal viability by identifying other funding sources for public service projects through this on-call grant writing program. So the, the staff is proposing that the council enter into these contracts with five consulting firms. They'll be three-year contracts, not to exceed $40,000. And so that's just the sum that wouldn't be exceeded per consultant. However, we budget, in our annual budget, an amount for grant writing, and so in totality, we'll stay within that amount. In the past, the city has participated in competitive grant programs, both federal, federal, state, and local. These agreements position the city to be in a position so that when notices of funding availability comes up, or we are made aware of different funding opportunities or grant opportunities, we can quickly go to one of these on-call consulting firms and ask them to provide the, the cost proposal for the work. So we are proposing to renew contracts with California Consulting, Evan Brooks Associates, Albert A. Webb, and KTUA. This year, we also requested statement of qualifications from Blazin Associates. And they're a fifth firm that we would like to enter into a contract with. Blazin Associates and Evan Brooks Associates, those two consulting firms only write grants. And so whereas Albert A. Webb and KTUA provide other services, and certainly can provide grant writing services, we wanted to be able to have more consultants that focus strictly on grant writing. And these are some of the grants that the city has received in the past. This was updated from last year's report. We've since then have received almost $650,000 for a guard rail safety project using the Highway Improvement Safety Program funds, and then also the 212, a little bit over 212 we got for the Blue Mountain Trail and Trailhead. So in total, we've, we've received about $6.5 million in, in grant funds. So with that, I'd, I'd request that the council approve the professional services agreements subject to city manager and city attorney review, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements. I'm happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Two quick questions. Number one, who's the person that is the only person that directs this on-call circumstances? Is it the city manager?
Yes.
Okay, so you're the only person that can do that. When we talk about on-call, we're talking about an open-ended agreement, up to $40,000, but it's still a checkbook. So that's why it's so important to me to know that. The other thing is to, it seems to me, and I guess I'm just doing a demonstration here, but $6.5 million worth of, seems like it's been worth it. It's the only way you can really, you know, gauge a consultant. You look at it, and you go, uh, yeah, it works. And it seems like it's been working, so congratulations. Good game plan.
Mr. Duffy, you had a comment you wanted to make? Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Molina, I just wanted to make sure that I understand this right. So the $40,000, it says $40,000 per contract. But, so do we have more than $40,000 that we can spend on these services total?
Well, every, every fiscal year, we budget for this particular service. And so for instance, let's just say, for, for example, we get cost proposals from these associates, excuse me, from these consultants, and every time, we go with the same consultant.
Okay, so.
So it can't exceed $40,000.
So this is not like a retainer fee?
No, it is not.
This is, this is setting there waiting to be used? In, in the event that there's a contract?
Correct. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a retainer.
Okay.
And we only spend, or, for instance, let's say, for instance, Mr. French's grant.
Okay.
I think it's $13,000. That's the cost, that's what we pay. It's not a retainer. And we pay for the service that we ask for only.
So this, in, in item 11 that we just had, and we approved $20,000 for Evan Brooks &amp; Associates for this, you know, what we just did. So that is, so will that, then, then, once we pay that, there'll be $20,000 left in the 40, from the $40,000, is that correct, or?
So what will happen there?
Mr. Duffy.
I'm sorry. What will happen there is, so you use bond proceeds for that. But here's what would normally happen. We only have appropriation in the budget for $40,000. So we can have 20 of those contracts. We can only spend $40,000. If we reach the $40,000 threshold, we're coming back to the council to ask for more appropriation. So, so, but we could use, if we, if we had, if we had $40,000 and we had one consultant that was just really doing all the work for us, we could use $40,000 for that consultant. But once we get to $40,001, we, we don't have any appropriation. You haven't given us that authority to spend that. You've only given us a contract that will not exceed $40,000. We can't spend over that.
Okay, so regardless of how many we have, once 40?
We only have appropriation of $40,000, and that's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Molina.
Further questions? Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration.
I'm voting first. I think this is worthwhile, so I'd mind to make the motion to recommend approval of the professional services agreements as outlined in recommendation one and two.
So I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. Our next item is item H, and this is a request for future agenda items by, by the city council. And so we are looking at the 2030 vision that was outlined in our strategic plan and that council members are interested in tasks or projects. And if they require more than an hour of staff time to complete, we ask that the item be agendized to determine if the time should be spent on preparing a report on the proposed item. And so tonight, we have three items. We will look at each three of them and, and vote whether they will be coming back with a staff report for us to review. And the first one was, council to review the policy for notification for projects and issues of importance to residents, and consider a policy that is beyond the minimum that state law requires. And so I did ask for this one, and I know that the minimum is generally like 300 feet that we notify. But in many cases, we know that there are neighbors beyond that 300-foot. But in many cases, we know that there are neighbors beyond that 300-foot geographic area that are really interested in these projects and probably have a perspective that they'd like to share. And I understand that the staff isn't trying to keep members of the public from knowing about it, but it just gets budgeted into their time that they do the 300 feet. So I would like us to consider a policy that has staff look beyond just that minimum and really give an idea of the project that's at hand and the geographic area that probably is most appropriate for our residents so that we can get the most perspective on those items.
Is that a motion, Madam Mayor?
No, I'm explaining what that item is. And I would like the consideration of my colleagues to put this on a future agenda item.
It seems to be a worthy subject matter, so I'll take a motion to put it on.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson votes no.
Thank you. Next one is parking enforcement on De Berry Street in Mount Vernon to Marado. And Councilmember Hussey, you requested that. Could you give just a little bit more information about that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I got an email from a gentleman. And he lives on Marado. And I guess we have parking enforcement signs on that street that's been placed up there for God knows how long. And it's for no overnight parking. And it's mainly for the apartments right there. My concern is that, and they're doing this, they're parking. There, I know it's a public street, but they're parking and they're leaving trash and everything else. And the quality of life for the homes that are there are being affected. And people can't pull out their driveways and it's going all the way to Marado. So one, I'd like to see, you know, since we have the signs there, we figure out a way to enforce that regulation and also talk to the apartment complex because, you know, it is a business and they should have adequate parking for their residents there. So I'd just like to, you know, follow up, see what we could do to help those residents on that street so they get their quality of life won't be affected by the apartments and parking issues that they're having. And since the city put up the signs there and not being enforced.
Mr. Hussey, I have a question. This is Doug Wilson for the record. What would keep us from, I guess, I'm just curious, what would keep us from striping or signing this, that area as a two-hour-only parking circumstance?
Would that be part of what would come back as recommendations from staff?
It would be. And to briefly answer, Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem's question, was that the signs that are there just say no overnight parking. Our sheriff's department can't enforce no overnight parking because there's no parameters there. And so we're working, right now, we're working on putting no overnight parking in the sign being from 2:00 AM to, you know, to 6:00 AM or something like that. Because the sheriff can't enforce it because the person might just be parking there for an hour. It's not overnight parking. So we're trying to address that particular issue, but we can certainly bring that, bring the item back because that is actually a permitted parking area.
And that's what the whole issue is, to see what we can resolve for these residents in that area.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
I raised my hand up before he said, that's a permanent parking area. Because I was going to ask, you know, I think Councilmember Hussey had a pretty good observation in that, is there enough parking spots for the residents? You know?
Is that a motion to bring this back on an agenda item? So that we can discuss it further?
Oh, okay. Sure. It can be a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Allen?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. And then the last one is work with the City of Colton to prohibit vehicles over 510s traveling on Mount Vernon Slope. And Councilmember Hussey, you had that one also. And you know that currently that they are prohibited, correct?
I see the sign for the City of Grand Terrace going down the slope. I don't see a sign for coming up. And I, one of the things, you know, since I retired, I go down there and I see a lot of the heavy vehicle traffic. And there's always vehicles backed up, so my concern is the air brake system going out. Plus, you know, we're looking at a grant for the slope anyway. It's adding extra pressure and stress on that road. And it just, it shouldn't be done. And that's why I say I don't, and you see the truck drivers still going up there. I don't know if they're doing a Maps Quest or something that's being authorized, but I don't see any signage for them going up. I still see them going down. And I know our law enforcement can't be there all the time. So we need something to try to, you know, curtail that or help stop that.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I see tractor trailers up every day, all day long, coming up that hill and heading over to, you know, High Grove, to the warehouses, trying to bypass the trouble. And it's, and I've often thought about it because, you know, the extra weight's going to destabilize the slope more faster. So that's a great observation there. To try to get Colton to work with us on that. I'll motion that.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen?
I'll second mine.
Second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. All right, we have City Manager communications. Mr. Duffy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Very quickly though, while you guys were chatting in the very beginning, I did look up the gentleman, the young man who passed away. His name is Albert Madrid. He's 25 years old. He rescued two young ladies from the trailer. Okay. Let's start this. So the mayor quickly referenced this in the very beginning of the meeting. And so one of the things that I want to read this quote is that "There's joy and wonder everywhere when you see the world through the eyes of a child." And so one of the things that this project has done is actually give an opportunity for kids from K to third grade and then kids from fourth through sixth grade to do this competition. And as the mayor indicated, it'll be used as part of an educational program in terms of letting people experience the roundabout. In addition to that, the older children at the high school were actually were able to design a bridge, as the mayor indicated, and a popsicles. Here's some of the winning photos and here are the bridges. So as you can see, they had quite a few people, children that competed in the program. Next, as some of the council members said, that we did have the Blue Mountain hike last weekend, last Sunday. And so this is really a neat little snapshot of what occurred on that event.
Those mile markers with the rocks were a really nice addition.
Also, yes. And also too, coming up is on the March 23rd, the Friends of the Library will be having a book bag sale. For five bucks, you can get a big bag of books. You can actually bring your own bag. For five bucks, it's a great way to prepare for the summer, for summer reading. And with that, that's ended my report, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we do not have a closed session tonight. So we will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, March 26, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on the future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for your attendance and your discussion. We are adjourned.